Jerry, you might be home from the on the panel. I'm not sure if you're not. It's been a while. Bring them in. Yeah. I don't know. I'm going to try one more. They have to go back in. Right here. There was. So you're probably going to get even better. Yeah. You have a screen. Very. Take it because. But I'm taking this. You are. It's a fire. Yay. Yeah, Matt. What is that? After. I had nothing to quit. 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 Well, I didn't know. Well, I didn't know. Well, I didn't know. Right. Well. See your moment. All right. These are the slips. I had. That's. Anyway. Okay.
How would it get together? How would it gather?
Oh, it's great.
She's the one.
Yeah.
Do as a presentation. Do we have a revised? Yes. Do we have a revised agenda? You would just go to see. The offer. The large aisle. Good luck. Good luck. Yes. Sir. Would you please join me in the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please. Note further record that all council members are present. Thank you. And we came from a closed session. Do we have a report from closed session?
Madam Mayor, the council did meet in closed session as outlined on your agenda. There's nothing to report out. Council simply provided direction in the closed session.
Thank you. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any deletions, additions, changes?
Move adoption.
There is one change that we would like, I'd like to make to the after oral communications. Number one would be to have a city manager's staff report on the climate-friendly purchasing guide.
As amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that would bring us to oral communications. Number one, I do have a lot of slips, and so I will ask the public to limit their comments to three minutes, please. And the first slip is from Jamie Dunn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmen, and representatives of the citizens of Brisbane and my neighbors and staff, the city. This past week, I attended the pre-proposal meeting for the library. And I saw some things that I'm sure that along the way you will be aware of, but this is something that I think is important to be noted. So I want to make a couple of, just respond to a couple of thoughts. One of the things, you know, I always like going to meetings with the architects because they have great plans and they look beautiful and they give you this tremendous proposal and they're all such pretty pictures. And you think, okay, but let me think about how does this work for the city? And that's, that's the point I'm coming from. So we were given, one of the pages in the book that we were given has a circle, and you will see this if you haven't seen it. And it just looks like this. And within the circle, the top of the page with the circle on it says, "Walking in Brisbane." And it says, "One quarter mile, 440 yards, is a generally accepted walking distance between destinations." I used to run the 440. I'm not sure I can walk 440 sometimes. So it says, so they've named all these spaces, these places in town that are 440 yards from the new library. And they say, "Within roughly a quarter mile of the new library site, there are schools, parks, blah, blah, blah." And it says, "The Brisbane Senior Center." And I've said this before, and we don't have a senior center. What we do have is we have senior housing that is managed by a corporation, not the city. And we do have, the city has provided two part-time people to work there, and we have great volunteers. Now, they do a really good job, but this is in fact a lobby. So a real senior center is an environment that is a lot of space where people can come in and there is artwork and art materials available at all times, and there are people working and they come in at their leisure, not when a class is given only. There is, could be a pottery wheel and a kiln and things of the sort where there's activity going at all times and people can come in and pick a table and play pinochle or play poker or something, but not on a scheduled basis and not in a small space and not only those few hours. So that concerns me. The Brisbane Senior Center, I think we have to stop saying that because it's not true. Want to visit some of the senior centers in the county, you'll see what a real senior center is like, and they make a big difference. It also says, "The Brisbane Teen Center is within a quarter mile of them." Well, you know where that is. It's not there. We don't have one right now. And it says, "Two bus stops, two senior shuttle stops, and two Caltrain shuttle stops." Those are for employees mostly, and they're only during working hours. And quite frankly, we don't have senior shuttle stops. If you want to use a senior shuttle in the county, you have to call and make an appointment. And usually people going to doctors and hospitals and things of the sort are going to get first call over and above somebody saying, "Can you take me to the library and pick me up in an hour?" It's not going to happen. So I think these things really have to be looked at carefully. Really, what would be ideal and a great gift to the city, if it would be considered a gift or a service that the citizens pay for, is a shuttle that works in the city, that does go make rounds regularly so people could have a calendaring time where they could get on the shuttle, go down to the pool, get on the shuttle, go over to the library, and so forth. One other thing I noticed was that it doesn't really say anything about seniors in the planning so much of this building. Toddlers, preschool, mothers with children, pre-teens or tweens, but not, not seniors. And I think that's, we're going to, these little kids are going to grow up in 10 years. The tweens are going to be on in four to five years. We have people here in their 40s that are going to be here till their 80s. And for 40 years, what are we going to give them? I think we have to look very carefully at this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jamie.
Madam Mayor, could I ask staff to make a clarification on that senior shuttle thing? Because I heard what Jamie said, but I don't know if it's to the contrary. And I really like that addressed.
If staff is prepared to make a comment on that.
Maria is the chair of the Supervisory Committee for Commute.org.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and in regard to shuttle service that we have for the city, we have a couple of different services available through Commute.org. We do provide commuter shuttles in the morning and afternoon. It is open to all, not only businesses in the Crocker Park area that participate in the consortium to fund that service, but also the residents of Brisbane. Residents are welcome to pick up a shuttle pass free of charge over in the finance department. In regard to the senior shuttle, there is a shuttle that is run by Caltrain Service during the midday. It does have a somewhat regular schedule as well as it's available to be reserved for excursion trips as well. So it's a bit of a blended model in terms of providing service to take people on other trips outside of their normal route. Usually it services people from going from Brisbane or to the Caltrain station, but also on occasion it can also take trips to take people either to shopping centers, the hospital, Kaiser, and other services such as that. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any other?
Well, just perhaps, you know, we have some misinformation that maybe that's something that we could put in a future article in the Brisbane Press.
If I can shed a little light on this, because I think, I would like to clarify what Ms. Dunn was talking about because I don't believe it came across in the exact format that it is. What she attended was the pre-proposal conference for the architects who are going to propose on the request for proposals for the library. So this was the opportunity that each of the three shortlisted architect firms had to come in and spend an hour with the stakeholder group. So the document that Ms. Dunn was waving in the air was their interpretation of facilities that were available in town based on their research and their information. That is not a city document, it's not a city representation, it's an architect's first representation. So the point of that meeting was for the architects to come in with the stakeholders and to get a sense of, what's your vision for the library? What sort of things do you want? What sort of services do you want? What sort of programs do you want? It's an effort so that the architects can put together their best response and then they can then participate in a vision competition which will allow that stakeholders group to make a recommendation to the council as to which firm to hire. Now, once that firm is hired, they are going to have additional significant public outreach with the entire community in addition to that stakeholders group. So again, that's the, that's the context in which this happened. It isn't fact or the city saying what it is, it's just one outsider's representation after doing a minimal amount of research on our city.
Thank you. Let's let people get their time in. We're not, this is not an item for discussion, so we will address that. And I think that the stakeholders meeting, the initial time, is when the bugs get worked out of a plant. Next slip I have is from Clara Johnson.
Former mayor.
The honorable Clara Johnson.
Oh, or have I been dishonored since then? I don't know. Did you, the next time it rains hard, is that the one? I'm being, I have two.
You know, I didn't look through, but we can, this one is on the economic development subject.
The state of nature, economic development, market capacity, the quality of life, the value of open space, and less intense use. I know that because for many, many years, we kind of had an anti-business bias here. And I don't think we have to be embarrassed about it, but we did. And, and I think that it's changing, and that's a natural probably part of life, that things go up and they go down. But what we don't, what we don't want to lose, whether we're more friendly to business, is the sense of the importance of our open space, of our community character, and community character relates to intensive use. And several things worry me about this change of goals with the 25-acre area that's located between Old County Road Valley Drive, Park Boulevard and, or Park Place rather, and Bay Shore Boulevard. Because I've been told that it is, there's a minimum of four stories being planned, I realize what the height limit is, but nonetheless, four stories just next to Bay Shore Boulevard is a lot of stories. It's also, if you're going to put residential uses in there, the residential uses are being placed on land subject to flooding, it's rather low. I realize that people are very concerned about HCD, but HCD is used as a boogeyman because we should consider that we still haven't issued certificates of occupancies for the last units approved a long time ago up on the northeast ridge. And when you consider a community of 4,000, the fact that we've added all these units and that we still haven't gotten those last ones occupied ought to be a consideration because we live in the three-dimensional world, not in the paper world of HCD, which doesn't know anything about us, doesn't care anything about us, and is indifferent to our community character. And I just want to make sure that when you make decisions, whatever decision you make, make it because it's what you believe, not because you think HCD is going to be, you know, coming down and doing something terrible to us. Ask Woodside, Portola Valley, Atherton, Hillsborough, you know, how, how much they're satisfying their goals. Because we should do what's best for us, not what HCD thinks is best for us.
Clara, can I ask a con, for a clarification for the public? Would you tell me what you're referring to with HCD?
I'm sorry. Housing and community development is a, a, an agency of the governor's office of the state of California, part of the executive branch. They issue goals for people in cities from on high. The, I wonder why we, I think what we need is affordable housing, not market rate housing. If you look at the paper and you read how much people pay for one and two-bedroom apartments, building four stories worth of apartments that people can't afford is really not a very good idea. If you're going to do something much more complicated and try to get money because people who have built affordable housing tell me that money is what you need from a governmental agency in order to be able to build affordable housing because it doesn't pencil out for a developer to do it on their own. And I think that the goals you have need to be analyzed and reviewed by the public. It's not that having a vision is a good idea. I'm not sure that this vision is the right vision for Brisbane. It really concerns me that it came out of, I guess it's natural it would come out of a goal-setting session, but it felt a little like, why are we doing this in such a way that it isn't really something that the public's intensely involved in? But I'm sure it will be in the future. Why are we doing this now when we face the biggest project in our history? It overwhelms our staff. It overwhelms everything. So why do we, why are we starting this now? Why does this make any sense to do it now? It makes sense to do something at some point, but I ask you to please consider those issues in going forward on this change of goals, so about that 25-acre area.
Thank you.
Should I do the other one? Or wait? How about if I wait?
Why don't you let, yes, let's.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next slip is from Anya Miller. Again, honorable Anya Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to talk about the energy, as usual, and the legislation's going to happen in Sacramento very soon. I'm a member of statewide California Energy Choice, Community Choice Group, advocacy groups, as well as a state, our county group that's working toward the Community Choice Energy District that your council has so smartly gone along with all the other cities and counties to have a joint powers agency, a new agency that will really provide community choice for people, for their energy. And that, of course, is in competition with PG&E, and they, instead of fighting the battle here, are going to Sacramento and using their advocacy role there to craft some legislation, and they have. And one of them, and I believe you have a text of this bill, AB 1110, it's going to be heard by the Senate Appropriations Committee this coming Monday, and so the time to have some feedback to help this community choice effort is now. And that's why I'm here. And you're, you have the sample letter that is still a valid kind of comment. We had a conference call, statewide conference call this afternoon, and I was told that the letter would still be very helpful if you can send it either as a councilor or as mayor. This AB 1110, just to advise you further, is the, was put forward by BG&E and its union. They have a union where the employees, electrical employees are all employees of BG&E, and they crafted this legislation. And it is, in a way, the first effort to standardize the greenhouse gas labeling and reporting that deals with energy, where it comes from, and what's renewable energy, defining just what is renewable and these renewable credits that exist now. And PG&E has been allowed to define everything so far. And this legislation, as amended, would allow the CCA also, the Community Choice, to participate and, and to have the same kind of level playing field in effect as far as greenhouse gas reduction claims that renewable energy, that the community choice is all about renewable energy. We can choose that and pay less than with BG&E. So I encourage you to send a letter and help, just amend the bill, and there's a chance that it would be amended. It has already been amended to help because Assemblyman Ting, who is in charge of it, is very receptive. So you have a good chance to put Brisbane's voice in and, and show that we care and maybe get the law further amended that it really serves to its purpose rather than just PG&E. So I hope you'll hear me and do what's good. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see that that went for a third amendment recently, I think yesterday. Excuse me, my.
Mic's not on. That, that bill went for a third amendment on Wednesday, I believe.
Yeah.
Perhaps we can talk about that in the council matters afterwards. Excuse me. Our next slip is from Colleen Mackin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Colleen Mackin, 161 San Bruno Avenue. I'll be brief. August 13th Planning Commission meeting. These are my own notes, transcript. Commissioner Parker, when is the community opinion survey going to be held? Suieki, those are all fine questions. The survey will be released towards the end of this month. When we talk about presentation of, I'm not convinced we'll have Lloyd stand and present results of these documents. Some of these things you may have to consider as part of your ongoing deliberations. They're not going to be in your hands. Lloyd will be in a position to present the data. The survey has not been mailed out yet. Will be mailed out in several weeks, maybe 10 days. There'll be a window of time for everyone to fill out and return. Then, the consultant who prepared the survey for the city will then analyze the results, and that will be presented, and that will be available at the deliberation, probably in the middle of your public hearing process. Commissioners will not have it in hand for hearings. Commissioners will not see the results. It will be presented to them as results, as tabulated or interpreted by a consultant. The community's not seeing the results. Nobody is, but a consultant. This is wrong. If this is the beginning of transparency in government for the hearings on the Baylands, this is a really bad way to start. I'm hoping it's just an oversight, and then it will be corrected, but I have real concerns about this. That survey needs to be made public, the results, and if in fact it's not available until they're at the deliberation stage, which it starts with two workshops, six public hearings, and two final deliberations. some feedback to help this community choice effort is now. And that's why I'm here. And you have the sample letter that is still a valid kind of comment. We had a conference call, statewide conference call, this afternoon, and I was told that the letter would still be very helpful if you can send it either as a councilor or as mayor. This AB 1110, just to advise you further, is the... was put forward by PG&E and its union. They have a union where the employees, electrical employees, are all employees of PG&E, and they crafted this legislation. And it is, in a way, the first effort to standardize the greenhouse gas labeling and reporting that deals with energy, where it comes from, and what's renewable energy, defining just what is renewable, and these renewable credits that exist now. And PG&E has been allowed to define everything so far. And this legislation, as amended, would allow the CCA also, the Community Choice, to participate and to have the same kind of level playing field in effect, as far as greenhouse gas reduction claims, that renewable energy, that the community choice is all about renewable energy. We can choose that and pay less than PG&E. So I encourage you to send a letter and help, just amend the bill, and there's a chance that it would be amended. It has already been amended to help, because Assemblyman Ting, who is in charge of it, is very receptive. So you have a good chance to put Brisbane's voice in and show that we care, and maybe get the law further amended, that it really serves its purpose rather than just PG&E. So I hope you'll hear me and do what's good. Thank you.
Thank you. I do see that that went for a third amendment recently, I think yesterday. Excuse me, my-
Mic's not on. That bill went for a third amendment on Wednesday, I believe.
Yeah.
Perhaps we can talk about that in the council matters afterwards. Our next slip is from Colleen Mackin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Colleen Mackin, 161 San Bruno Avenue. I'll be brief. August 13th Planning Commission meeting. These are my own notes, transcript. Commissioner Parker, when is the community opinion survey going to be held? Suieki, those are all fine questions. The survey will be released towards the end of this month. When we talk about presentation of, I'm not convinced we'll have Lloyd stand and present results of these documents. Some of these things you may have to consider as part of your ongoing deliberations. They're not going to be in your hands. Lloyd will be in a position to present the data. The survey has not been mailed out yet. Will be mailed out in several weeks, maybe 10 days. There'll be a window of time for everyone to fill out and return. Then, the consultant who prepared the survey for the city will then analyze the results, and that will be presented, and that will be available at the deliberation, probably in the middle of your public hearing process. Commissioners will not have it in hand for hearings. Commissioners will not see the results. It will be presented to them as results, as tabulated or interpreted by a consultant. The community's not seeing the results. Nobody is, but a consultant. This is wrong. If this is the beginning of transparency in government for the hearings on the Baylands, this is a really bad way to start. I'm hoping it's just an oversight, and then it will be corrected, but I have real concerns about this. That survey needs to be made public, the results. And if, in fact, it's not available until they're at the deliberation stage, which it starts with two workshops, six public hearings, and two final deliberations, and they don't have it till the deliberations after eight meetings, where the public could be discussing the survey as part of that? It's important. Then those hearings need to be delayed. I'm sorry. That's my opinion. I'm also very concerned that at the same Planning Commission meeting, it was stated that the council had a white paper that mandated that the Baylands hearings and deliberations by planning be completed by the end of the year. I don't see how this is possible. I worked on the DEIR, 1,200-page document. Now there's a fiscal and economic impact. There's other attachments. You've got one commissioner, Greg Anderson, who worked on the DEIR. How many of those other commissioners actually ever have read it? And they're going to have two hearings a week and absorb all this material? Absolutely impossible. I think you need to look at your schedule. I think you need to go into next year, because you're also not giving the public time to assimilate what's taking place in the hearings, or enough opportunity to attend the hearings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colleen.
Could I make a quick comment on that?
Yes.
It's my understanding that the City Manager was giving a report on the schedule situation during the City Manager's Report for the Planning Commission, and we'll have some chance to talk about it then. Is that correct?
Correct. Excuse me. Correct. And also, the survey will be sent out, I believe, next Tuesday, John. And so it'll go from August 25th to September 12th. I'm not quite sure, you know, I'm not sure what exactly was said or how it was interpreted, but the survey results are going to be available to the public and to the council, and all the raw data, as well as the consultant's interpretation of that. Well, that's always been the plan, so there's not going to be any issue there. There probably is a little bit of an issue in terms of the timing of the whole process, but I think we're going to have a further discussion about that later tonight.
And I do think that the white paper that we had discussed earlier was a goal, not a mandate.
And I know John can correct me again if I'm wrong here, but I don't think it had any date-sensitive. I think it had timeframes, and 90 days is what I recall, to get a recommendation to the council, but it wasn't a December 31st drop-off or any date certain.
And we will be discussing that a bit later. And then I have a slip from Danit Dilworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Now, it's about a month ago, I had sent a letter to the council about concern for the container shipping vessels that idle out in the bay. And I did get a response from Councilwoman Conway stating one of the conditions that exists, which was a union issue. And being a member of a union, I fully support the process, but I'm still concerned about the environmental issues that may arise from that. And since then, I've received a letter from Sierra Club about coal being considered to be shipped through Oakland ports now, coming from Utah and most likely going on barges to other countries that have different environmental policies. I'm quite concerned, and I would like to know if, or would encourage you to review the information, and as an esteemed body and representing the citizens of Brisbane, to add your name to the list of people who want to have, I believe this says CESE, but some better control over the issue of transportation of coal on our rail lines. And one of the reasons I'm really concerned is that the City of Brisbane has not established any kind of goals that other communities have, like nuclear-free, or zero-carbon, or whatever the goal, however we would like to frame it. But being absent that language, but knowing that it's important for our future as mankind, I would highly urge you to add your names, or add the City of Brisbane to this list of concerned citizens about the practice. So there is a union letter out there that they've kind of retracted, that they still want to do the business, but maybe if you cover it up when it's being transported, I think that's specious. I think we have to get down and dirty-party, pardon the pun, but just say, stop this nonsense. And this, I believe this forum on KQAD has like pages and pages, like 31 pages of comments. Some of them are just right on that, okay, so we're going to ship it over, and then still that's going to come waft its way back to America. We're just being stupid to continue this practice, and I would ask you to support. Agendize and consider adding your name to the list. Thank you.
And you'll give that in- You'll give that information to the city clerk? Thank you very much. Next slip is from Michelle Salmon.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. Thank you for an opportunity to speak. I'm going to go really fast. I have several things. One, I think we should mobilize, make our website optimized for mobile reading. It's a pain in the, you know what? When you try and look at something on your cellphone, you can't even make it larger to see what time something's at. I know that I asked about the height of the dirt piles recently, and was assured that they were less than 75 feet, or that was what the report was, but I can assure you, they're taller than that. They really have grown tremendously. So please, I'd like that to be further examined, and I'd also like another check to make sure that the soil they're depositing there is safe, because honestly, it doesn't look good. It looks really unhealthy. The third thing is, we have a serious problem with our trees, and they really need to be deep-watered by the city, the street trees. They are dying. We are going to lose a lot of them. They are in severe crisis. And I know everybody's like poised, waiting for El Nino, but if El Nino does indeed come, we're going to lose even more of them, because they don't have the root systems left anymore to support the size of the trees. So if we don't start deep-watering them now, we are probably going to lose a lot of our trees. And with this last heat wave, they're in severe crisis. And I think the city council needs to take an emergency action to start a tree-watering program of our trees before we lose them. I think that there are also some Monterey pines that are a severe threat. There is one that runs along the pathway between Solano Street and Cedar Point that parallels Clamas Street, that is now completely, completely brown and covered with ivy, and it is extremely large. I do not know whether it is on city property or on the property owner's property, but it is extremely dangerous. It is now a fire hazard and a threat for falling over. It needs to be removed. There are several others that are going that way rapidly, especially around the school and other areas. It needs to be addressed before someone gets killed. I mean, two children got killed in Yosemite recently from a falling branch. This is because of the drought. This is unprecedented.
Where's that tree at, Michelle?
That tree, it looks like it's on the Rences' property, or on the property going up the pathway, by Centennial Pathway, I think we call it now. That's where it is.
On Clamas?
On Clamas, yes. And it is completely brown. Even the ivy's brown now. There's not even ivy holding up anymore, and it is a huge tree. And then the last thing I want to bring to your attention, I noticed that there were several small capital projects on the agenda tonight. And a couple of months ago, the mayor's new puppy down at the marina, because she was at a meeting, and I walked over to the fishing pier. And the first thing I noticed... Can we put these on the thing? The first thing I noticed is that the fishing pier sign is gone. Gone, gone, disappeared. The beautiful sign that we put up back in 1982 is gone. And then I walked out on the pier, and frankly, I was stunned, shocked, and horrified at the condition of the pier. And you all have photographs of it. I'd like to be able to show it to the people. I don't know if this is really going to show up very well on there. Oh, right here. This is where the sign used to be for the fishing pier, which was our pride and joy when we built the marina. Next slide. This is the deterioration of one of the railings. That's a long shot. The entire railing on both sides is completely deteriorated. Way down at the end of the pier, it is disgusting. It's disgusting. I'm sorry, this is a public amenity, and we take care of it like this, and yet we have the money to buy a $150,000 boat that I haven't seen go out to help people? This is a public fishing pier, and this is our marina, and this is what it looks like, and this is dangerous. And this needs to be addressed. So I know we have a lot of issues on our plate, and, you know, we're willing to build a new skate park, and a new library, and a new this, and a new that, and we don't take care of the toys that we already have. So I think we really need to address this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As a quick response, I have no idea what it takes to make a website more optimized for mobile, but I'm sure that we can look into that down the road. Trees, I know that I looked at the invoicing for the most recent payment register, and there is bills for deep-watering from Davy Tree. So I know that we are attempting to do that for trees that we've noted, and that there will be limitations on what trees can have that done to it, but I'm-
Just to be involved in this?
Well, I'm not going to get into a discussion. I just know that we are doing some of that. And that, as with any safety issue, if there is a tree or an item that doesn't seem safe, that should be phoned into Public Works, and so that they can be made aware of it, and we can be on top of any of those situations. So later in our evening, we will have a report on the soils and the heights of the piles. So that is something that's coming up later in the meeting.
Isn't that right after oral communications?
It's going to be after our presentation, I believe, yes.
Could I ask the-
Yes.
I guess it's a question for our Public Works Director. Is the fishing pier a part of our marina maintenance program?
It should be.
Yeah, because I've noticed the same things that Michelle's talking about.
Yes, sir. I just saw the photos today, so we'll send a bill to the inspector out tomorrow. Yes, sir, it's nothing money can't fix, I'm sure. We'll go out there and make an estimate.
I recall that, and Anya will remember this better than me, that that was built with a grant from the state, right? Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know whether they have any relationship to it or not, but they paid for it initially.
Sure.
So maybe we can get some help in that regard.
Yes, sir. We'll take a look at it.
Thank you. Then, I'm going around a second time, and I have two slips, and I'm going to call it quits after that. Oh. Do we have another member of the public who has not spoken?
Is that here? No.
No, no slip.
She wanted to say something. She wrote something for everybody, so she's going to read it for you. Okay, we'll do it together. When you smoke, don't do it, because you want to smoke-
More and-
More.
More.
And you'll-
Get sick with cancer.
So my daughter wanted to come today so she could practice being a public official, but no, the real reason is that we feel very strongly about the issue that's coming before the city council related to smoking ordinances. And I'm a board-certified oncologist, and also the chief of oncology over at Kaiser Permanente San Francisco. And I just want to make two quick points. One is that smoking is the number-one cause of preventable illness in the United States. It causes a lot of death and morbidity from not just cancer, but heart disease and emphysema. And much of it is caused by second-hand smoking as well. Lung cancer, which is definitely a smoking-related disease, kills hundreds of thousands of people a year in the United States, and it's a serious, serious health problem, more so than any other health problem that I know of. The other point I want to make is that e-cigarettes are proliferating, and the medical community does not feel like e-cigarettes are safe. I know there's information out there, but at least from a medical standpoint, we do not feel that e-cigarettes are safe. The cartridges are toxic. The poison control centers have a sharp spike of children, other young people ingesting, for example, nicotine, which is highly toxic in the liquid form. Also, it's addictive for children. We don't have regulations on e-cigarettes, and many of the cigarette companies are buying these smaller companies. And what's happening is they're being marketed to children, and they're being marketed in vape lounges to young adults, and we're starting a habit of addiction. So there are many, many other ways to quit smoking, and if we are going to use these devices to quit smoking, we should regulate them. So I would just like to say that Samantha and I really, really support anything you can do to make it harder to smoke in our community and healthier for the rest of the community. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ray. I had your slip under the other section instead of oral communications.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Samantha. So are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on a subject that's not...
Barbara Ebel, 349 San Bruno. I was just inspired by Anya and the community choice aggregation. I just came back from a conference on climate action planning, and the representatives from the City of Lancaster was like, well, we did net zero, and we've got gigawatts of power in, and we're going to do, and we wish we started off with community choice aggregation. I'll do a whole report on Wednesday. But it is really, I think it's what's really going to transform our relationship to our power and the power that, you know, we use for everything every day. It's a key step. And I just wanted to say that I completely agree that that letter needs to be written, and that that's really, really very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Mayor and City Council, this is my platform. Breathe clean air. Smoke is smoke. I hope that you will consider looking carefully into creating an ordinance that will protect people in multifamily housing in particular. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, any other members of the public who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Okay, I have two last slips that were repeats, and we'll go with Clara Johnson.
One last word on the economic development. You can only have a business if there's market capacity to have business, and your economist- And your economist colleague has said this many times before. So wishful thinking won't do it. Market capacity is what you need. So there's no use planning for businesses that don't have any marketplace. Thank you. The reason I wanted to speak a second time is about the next time it rains hard. Many months ago, I looked out my living room window and saw what looked like a fire break cut into the steep hill above Tulare Street. I stared and stared at it, wondering how that could have happened. The soil was denuded of vegetation, and now, after all these many months, there's a little bit of ground cover. This is a severe risk of erosion and possible landslide onto homes on Tulare. Perhaps if in 1983 is an example, it might get to San Bruno Avenue, which is one of our major arteries in Brisbane. And I think you should really consider having something done about it. I understand that it was done without permission, and that there may have been a fine levied against the person who did it. The fine won't stop erosion. Enforcement of the rules has sometimes been lax, and I wonder if this might have encouraged the person to try to get away with this. It's about 30 feet wide, 20 to 30 feet wide, 100 feet long. I can't tell if it extends on the other side of the hill, but it goes all the way to the top. And in a serious or extended rainstorm, I really believe it could slide and erode. It's on the westerly side. As I said, it threatens the home on Tulare, as well as perhaps on San Bruno Avenue. It's really a clear and present danger. And if there is an armenio, it's less than 60 days to the beginning of the rainy season, there's rain predicted, at least some, at the end of the month. And I would like to know what the city is going to do about it. I think there should be erosion control measures put in place now. And so I didn't know if people could see it, or if you're aware of it, if it's up there. I think they're aware of it because I was told that it was done without permission. So could you answer the question, what does the city plan to do to satisfy the needs for safety for the citizens? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if it were possible, would you ask former Mayor Johnson, perhaps we could get an address on it, a physical address, or between two addresses, so we can nail it down and take a look at it?
Or perhaps we could have her pointed out on one of our open space maps...
Yes, ma'am. That would be helpful.
That would be helpful, so we'd know exactly which property, and if it's the one that we may already know about or may not.
It's behind homes. It's not, I don't know what address it's at. I can just see it very clearly from where I am, but I've noticed that on the street you can't see it because of the vegetation on either side. I'd be happy to have you come over and look at my living room, look out the window, and you'll see it.
Give you a call, Clara. I'll keep you a call. We'll take care of that.
Thank you. Again, safety issues, if you know of them or something that concerns you, feel free to reach out to our Public Works Department. And I have one final slip from Dana Dohworth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I guess you'll probably never take a meeting, cancel a meeting in the future. I had, I needed to be fingerprinted for the purpose of working and found out that the police department does not have LiveScan, that our police department still does fingerprinting on paper. That seems so archaic that I just can't believe it. That I know, it sounds like other people. I've seen the officers riding around in a gang of six on motorcycles. You've got motorcycles, but somehow you don't have fingerprinting services that are connected to the FBI and GVs or whatever the system is. And it doesn't make any sense. So I would appreciate if you could look into it. Thank you.
I'm sure that the police chief can give us, or the captain can give us...
Commander.
...information on that. But we do not have any motorcycle police.
That is correct. We do not have any motorcycles currently for the department. So for that issue, that's resolved. But LiveScan would be great. I would love to have it. It's very cost prohibitive for a town of our size, so that's the reason why we don't have it in our town. So there are adjacent agencies that do offer it, that people can go to use it. Or we're glad to do it the old-fashioned way, up close and personal. So however we can serve our citizens, we'll get it done.
And we are connected to a database, right? Nationwide database? I think, I think they were saying we weren't connected to database, the FBI database or something?
Well, the prints, whether it's LiveScan or physically taken, all get submitted to the same database. They get run to that database, and we get the results back.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. That moves us on to the presentation on the Climate Friendly Purchasing Guide for the City of Brisbane. We have our intern...
Madam Mayor, if I could just do a quick introduction. The person standing in front of you right now is Quinn Hoga. Quinn is an intern for us this summer from the University of Oregon. She's been working on a variety of different projects, but one of them is a Climate Friendly Purchasing Guide. We had a meeting earlier this week with a council subcommittee, and we're going to do a presentation to you tonight on this. And then from here, it's going to go to the Open Space and Oncology Committee. They will have an opportunity to review it and make recommendations, and then it'll come ultimately back to the City Council for adoption. But Quinn, being a student, is getting ready in a couple of weeks to go back to school. So we wanted to take the opportunity for her to have an opportunity to meet you and make a presentation tonight. And I also indicate that she's been working with Karen Kinzer in the Public Works Department and our lead staff person to the Open Space Committee on this project.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. So like I said, my name's Quinn Hoga, and I've had the pleasure of interning with the city this summer. And one of the projects I've been working on is drafting a Climate Friendly Purchasing Guide for the City of Brisbane. And so this is intended for any city employee who's purchasing goods and services for any city facility. A lot of other cities and even universities have adopted similar plans. And so I looked to, and even the County of San Mateo. So I looked at a lot of those for my research, and then also to the Institute for local governments. So I'm just going to kind of go through and hit some of the high points, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. So Climate Friendly Purchasing means the purchase of products and services that have a decreased negative impact on human health and the environment when compared to alternative products and services. The purpose of this guide is to help identify important sustainability factors to consider when making purchasing decisions, and to provide implementation and purchasing guidance for employees. So the first section we have is implementation and compliance. So when purchasing products and services for the city, I would recommend using products and services that are certified with an ECO label. And this guide does recognize that eco-friendly products do sometimes come at a higher cost when compared to other products. But it's important to consider the life cycle of a product over the initial cost. And although the initial cost may be higher, the product will likely offset higher long-term costs that the city may incur. So the next pages, two and three, are a list of various products and services and examples of products. And I tried to compile a list of the most commonly identified or commonly seen ECO labels on the products, such as paper and cleaning products, and even electric cars, and sustainably harvested wood that's used for furniture building. So if there's no ECO label, or if there's no environmentally friendly alternative for a product, it's important to consider qualities such as durability, product life, life cycle assessment, and ultimately the disposal of the product when compared to other alternative products. And so then I go over some other factors to consider in the office and in city facilities. So reducing transportation impacts when ordering goods. So this would mean trying to avoid overnight shipping whenever possible, and giving preference to local manufacturers if it's possible. Also recycling and repurposing items whenever you can. And also only printing when absolutely necessary. And hopefully in the future, adopting some sort of policy where we only would print upon request. And then consistently monitoring the energy efficiency of city facilities, especially the Brisbane community pool. So the final section here is monitoring and training. So with the implementation, or the adoption and implementation of the Climate Action Plan for the City of Brisbane, one of the items in their agenda is to adopt a Climate Friendly Purchasing Guide. So there will be, it's my understanding that there will be a staff and/or citizen advisory committee, and they will also help with the implementation of the Climate Friendly Purchasing Guide. And they will do things such as formulate a plan for implementation, be responsible for educating city staff, also organize pilot testing for different products, report biannually to the city manager or to city council about any recommendations they have to make the policy or the guide more efficient and effective. And then ultimately monitoring the actual behavior and implementation of the guide, and figuring out how to quantify improvements and behaviors. So that's it. Thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Very concise and well thought out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does staff, or does council have any questions for Quinn?
I have a couple of questions. Madam Mayor. Thank you, Quinn, for the presentation. So you said that the county, you looked throughout the county to see if any cities were in the process of adopting these types of guidelines, as well as the county. Did you find any cities for the county itself?
So the county does have one, and they're in the process of revising it. So I contacted the Office of Sustainability over there, and they sent me their revisions that are going to be adopted soon, because I think the one that's on the website now is from about 2010, I want to say. I looked a lot at the City of Berkeley's, and I think Seattle, Washington were some of the main ones. And then on the Institute for Local Governments, they have a lot of templates and a lot of good resources for Climate Friendly Purchasing Guides.
All right. Yeah, that's right. The county does have that sustainability.
Yeah, it's new, yeah.
And so do you think that there are possibilities of perhaps incorporating a similar version of what they have, but with a more Brisbane touch to it for our citizens?
Yeah, of course. That's kind of what I tried to do. I did model mine a lot off of theirs, because I talked a lot with one of their employees over there. And then I did try to implement things that are more Brisbane-specific.
Did you say that we don't have a compost bin for our...
No, there's not one in City Hall. Apparently the scavengers doesn't have, they don't have compost over here yet.
Okay. We better get on those guys.
Yeah.
We need to do that.
I think next year.
Requiring everyone else in our town to do it, and we're not doing here at City Hall.
Well, it's not in Crocker Park. We actually talked about that at a meeting.
Oh, did you?
And it's only for residential right now. It's going to be rolled out, I believe, next year for Crocker Park, which would hopefully include City Hall.
Okay.
Have to involve it with the exercise program, where you get the city worker to push the can over to the residential district? Ray, did you have any questions?
No, well, I was a part of the committee that discussed the initial draft, and Laurie and I made some suggestions, which you responded to very well, and I'm very impressed with that. And this is really something that will be going to the Open Space and Oncology Committee. It's really, you know, their responsibility to take it from here, as long as we agree with that. And that'll come back, I guess, as a part of the Climate Action Plan, if I understand.
Yeah.
Right. Right. And we talked at our meeting about how, you know, the city is already doing a lot of these practices. And so what this is really doing is, you know, putting it in writing and recognizing our existing efforts, and also putting in some aspirational goals. These are not requirements, but guidelines.
Yeah. No, it's a great document. You know, Quinn, you're an excellent example of what students can do. You know, how the impact that they can make. So if there are any students out there, Brisbane, you're going to college, and you want to come back and serve your community in some kind of capacity such as this, we'd be more than welcome to have you come down to City Hall and give back. So thank you, Quinn.
Thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you very much for your report, Quinn.
Thank you.
Good luck when you go back to school.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you enjoyed your time as an intern.
I did, thank you.
With us, and that we wish you all the luck.
Thank you.
Going back to the University of Oregon.
Thank you.
Go Ducks.
Mayor, may I make an announcement?
Yes.
We're having audio problems this evening, and you won't be able to tell the public at home, because they won't hear you, but we're putting a sign on the bottom of the screen explaining that. We're working on it, and our TV people are calling Comcast. We believe that there's a problem with, on that end, so.
Okay.
Have to read lips, huh?
Can't hear us.
Come on down.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our consent calendar. And to...
Move adoption. Well, I'd like to make a couple of requests. And I think, Laurie, you want to pull the minutes, right?
Yes, item A.
And I'd like to pull item C, the grand jury report response, and E.
And I'm sorry, E?
C and E, yes.
Okay. So that leaves us with item B, D, F, and G. Do I have a motion?
Move adoption.
Okay.
D, F, and G.
And a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. And then on item A, Laurie, you gave us a list of some proposed changes.
Correct. So on page six, regarding the consideration of Planning Commission recommendations regarding short-term residential rentals, I'd like to add in that we asked the staff to conduct further research on enforcement issues, and not if, but how these types of rentals can be of benefit to the community. And also that we did not agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation to put it on the ballot, but instead directed staff to conduct the further research noted and do some public outreach, and then that it would come back before the City Council, before going to the Planning Commission.
On that note, I think that's a good section to add, but I think that it wasn't that the council didn't agree to consider it for a ballot, but that we didn't want to rush it to be on the ballot in November, which would have required an immediate decision. So I think that the decision was to not put it on the November ballot, or the immediate ballot.
Okay, right. To not, there was a staff report with a recommendation. So whatever that recommendation was, I think you're right, it might have been for the November ballot.
Right. It was more that it was something that needed to be done that evening if we were going to go ahead and put it on the ballot. So I think that we weren't, I think the intent, if we add this section that we would want to put, that it was not meant for the November ballot.
Right. We could clarify then and add, in November, as recommended in the staff report.
Anybody okay with those changes?
Yeah. I had one, actually Sheri had put in here on the green. It's highlighted in green. And the reason for that, Ray and I were having a conversation today about California, League of California Cities. And he goes, oh, yeah, you're the voting delegate. And I go, I don't, I don't remember that being that way.
I said, I read it in the minutes.
So I asked Sheri to go back to the minutes and listen to the minutes, and this is what she had put in, what the conversation was. So I guess really it kind of comes down to the question, if you're attending, or Cliff's attending, or Laurie's not attending.
I won't be attending, so I'm glad that that was clarified.
And I think that we're supposed, we have two alternates. And I believe that's what the intention was during our meeting, and I didn't go back to review the tape, but I thought that we had made me the delegate, and that we had two alternates who were planning to attend. So I thought that you were also on that.
I was planning on attending, for sure, but I wasn't planning on being the voting delegate. But as it is right now, you're not attending, Cliff's not attending, and Laurie's not attending, so.
The League of California Cities, I'm attending.
You are. I asked you that.
No, you asked about the dinner.
No. Oh, I probably...
Oh, yeah, you said council of cities. Oh, yeah, you said Council of Cities.
I'm sorry. I meant League of California.
I am attending the League of California.
A little slip.
There you go.
So you're the voting delegate.
We need an alternate.
That's what I, and that's what I kind of recalled that the conversation was. That's why I asked her to go back and look at it, because...
And I was still on the fence, and that's why we made Cliff the alternate and you the other alternate, because you were both planning to, to attend.
Right.
But you are going to attend now.
I'm still on the fence, but I would, if not the entire conference, then I would certainly try to attend the business meetings.
Sheri, get off the fence, come on.
Sometimes it's always good to be on the fence.
Okay, anyway, aside from that, so I just had what was, what was actually said and put into the minutes instead of...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, me being the voting delegate.
We can, we can discuss the rest under counsel, so we'll move on.
Okay. So a motion to approve City Council minutes of July 16th.
Item A. And second?
As amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like to be listed as abstaining because I was not present.
Okay.
You still vote for it. I could.
And... Excuse me, that brings us to item C, the authorizing the mayor to execute a response letter to the San Mateo County Grand Jury Report regarding flooding ahead, planning for sea level rise. And you wanted to pull that item?
Yeah, I have some concerns about the way in which some of the responses are formulated. And I told the city manager that I would like to get together some alternative language, but I just didn't have time to do that. I'd like to express two of my major concerns, and then maybe the expedite matters, if it's feasible to maybe assign it to one of our subcommittees like Health and Safety and bring it back at the, at the next meeting, because I'd like to make a lot of language changes if you all are agreeable. The first change that I think we should make is, is to bring up, up-to-date the sea level rise research situation. And there's been a really important new scientific study that's published online in the end of July by 16 climate scientists headed by James Hansen from NASA, which sort of brings up-to-date what all the real situation is in terms of all the different computer models and all the new changes in the ice melting feedback loops in the Antarctic and so forth. So it really does, you know, change the whole scientific situation in terms of sea level rise. And, you know, they do say, and there is, you know, a probability of several meters by 2100 from, you know, the consensus of all the computer models and so forth. And that's, it's a very interesting study, because in the way they're handling it, it's about 125 pages, and what they're doing is actually having it online for peer review, which is, you know, really kind of, it's, you know, a professional journal, so it's kind of unprecedented. And of course, they've already gotten hundreds of peer reviews, so it's really quite an incredible discussion ongoing right now, and I really think we should reference that and we should all be aware of it. So I'd kind of like to include that. And the second big point that I have is that I've looked at the CCAG response, and one of the points that CCAG makes is that the grand jury sort of dismisses CCAG as, as an organization, you know, that could do this job, which I think, and I think most of us would agree, is kind of strange, because, you know, CCAG is the countywide, you know, city-based organization that does a lot of things that would be, you know, similar to this. So why they would argue for, you know, the flood control district is a little bit unusual, except for an interesting political fact, which is noted, that CCAG is controlled by the cities, but the flood control district is controlled by the Board of Supervisors. So I kind of like to think that we would kind of weigh in on the side of CCAG. And they have some really good language in the CCAG response, and I'd kind of like to, you know, include that, too. So rather than spend a whole lot of time on the language tonight, presuming the city attorney says that it'll be okay, we can fudge a day or two, because I think they want it by September 3rd, the judge wants it by September 3rd. If we could maybe, Laurie, because I know you went to the sea level rise, that's why I was thinking that we would be a good team to work on the language, and with the staff, of course, and then come back with a revision next time. That's my suggestion.
Okay. I also had some comments as well, if you're done. So I noticed that the, the letter from the grand jury asked us not only to state whether we agree or disagree with the findings, but also the recommendations regarding implementation, and I don't see any of that in the draft letter. And I asked staff about that earlier, but I, I haven't really received a response.
Let me take a shot at that. So it's a two-part answer. The first part is that requirement, if you will, is listed in every civil grand jury finding that comes out. Unfortunately, the second part of the answer is the writer of the recommendation oftentimes doesn't write the recommendation in a fashion so that one city can answer it. For instance, some of the questions in here say, the 20 cities in the county should all get together and establish an organization. Well, that's fabulous, but how does Brisbane answer that? You know, how do we, how do we answer a question that requires a cooperation of 20 other people? So that's the overwhelming reason why there aren't timelines in there, because they, the question was just written, the recommendation, rather, was just written in such a fashion that would be extremely difficult for us to come up with something without having to coordinate with everybody in the interim. Excuse me.
Okay. And then I had suggested some changes and some cleanup language, which is what was before you on the dais, and the major thing was that I think that it should reference in our response the efforts that have been going on with the county led by Congresswoman Jackie Speer.
So I think, you know, I agree with you, and I think there are enough, you know, reformulations, really, and additional information that it might be worth, you know, the two of us, you know, sitting down with staff and coming up with, you know, some different language and bringing it back to the council next time.
So, city attorney, you okay with that?
I think what we should do, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think what, in the interim, staff will send a letter to the grand jury indicating that it was considered tonight, council wants to...
Massage language.
Wants to have further input with respect to the response, which is what the purpose of the public hearing is, is all about, and that we would provide that to the grand jury. We'll bring it back at the September 3rd council meeting, and we will get a response to the grand jury, if not that following Friday, certainly after Labor Day. I think if we let the, the grand jury person or whoever is supposed to send the letter to know that we're meeting the, the spirit of what is going on, and they know it's not just sitting around collecting dust, that the council's actively trying to respond to, to the report.
And the, just for the public to know, the, the grand jury response to their report is, is requested to be submitted by what date?
September 3rd.
September 3rd. So we wouldn't be able to make that date if we bring it back to the council?
Correct. But I think if we let the, the grand jury know that it's being worked on, we anticipate having the, the finalization of that letter on September 3rd, and our response will be forthcoming shortly thereafter, I don't think there's going to be any difficulty with that approach.
And if I could just make a suggestion in, in preparation for a subcommittee meeting, it would be helpful then if, if I can get a copy of the CCAG response and also a copy of the letter, the study that was published in July, or at least a link to it.
Just, and just so the public knows, you know, especially kind of a pet peeve for Ray and I, throwing around acronyms. CCAG stands for City and County Association of Governments, which Councilmember Miller was really instrumental in forming that back in 1990, I think it was, right?
I, I currently sit on that board, and we did have a lengthy discussion about the grand jury response from the CCAG board. It was interesting, because initially Supervisor Pine's office, and Supervisor Pine had come to the CCAG board to discuss the possibility of, of strengthening the flood zone, and it got a lot of resistance from the city and county government board, because some of them felt that they were trying to take a role that should be CCAG's. And so some of the responses in the, in the letter to the grand jury really looked at whether or not CCAG would be an appropriate body to do the sea level rise studies and implementation plan for, for mitigation, or if even it would be just the appropriate model to have multi-jurisdictional support for, for whatever is going to need to be done. And then a lot of the things that were brought up in the grand jury report were dismissive of the capabilities of the CCAG. So it, it was very interesting to see how they responded to the report was, in a way, a response to their organizational abilities and what they currently do. So I do think that it would be nice to have a little bit more information and more finessing on this letter, and I would support doing that. And I think that others on this council could also give input, perhaps, to the other members of the ad hoc committee. I would appreciate your efforts to do that.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Madam Mayor, I just have a question for staff. So, you know, when I was reading through it, you know, I sensed that, you know, kind of a cool kind of approach to the, you know, the forming of, say, a new joint powers authority. And, and because it, you know, just reading through it, it seemed like it wasn't really clear with the details of, you know, approve, you know, or, you know, recommend moving forward with something, but not really knowing a lot of the details, like the financial contribution of each city and where, you know, the, the voting power lie within this new organization. And so it's like, well, how can you expect the city to move forward with something and, you know, with a lot of gusto when you don't really know all the details? So it, was I reading that?
You're 100% point on, sir. That, that was exactly a lot of the concern as we were reading through it, is that this is one of the oddest civil grand jury reports I've read, where they, they talk, and it just seems so oddly coincidentally timewise with Supervisor Pine's effort, and then they talk about, well, we interviewed some people, but we're not going to tell you who they are, and we asked them some questions, but we're not going to tell you the questions, and these are the answers they gave, and don't you think it'd be a great idea to have an organization that would do this wonderful thing? And, and yeah, in theory it would be, but, you know, if you come home to your family and say, don't you think we should get a family pet? And everybody says, yay, that's a great idea, and you bring home a Bengal tiger. Well, that's not what we meant. You know, so we, I think in concept, there aren't any deniers on staff about sea level rise. You know, that's empirically proven, except for certain people in the world, apparently. We know it's happening, there's a conversation about the rate of that rise going on. Certainly, it needs to be addressed, but before we can agree or recommend to you that you agree to sign on to an organization, we'd like a little more of the details, and we're not trying to delay it, we just want to, kind of want to hammer it out and make sure we get the right organization working on it. So you, you caught exactly what was going through staff's mind as we drafted that, sir.
All right.
I think CCAG recognizes that in their response. We should probably have the CCAG response as, when we put together our changed language, that that should be something for all the council to read, so you can, because I'm sure we'll tweak that, too.
All right. Thank you for pulling that, Ray.
Madam Mayor, somebody has their hand up in the audience there.
Yes, would you like to speak on this?
Question, it's possible that, other than the political...
Just, if, if our audio is back on, then I think it's better that you come to the, to the podium so the people can hear you.
I think that the political interpretation, of course, is true, but it may be that people, some people in the county are concerned that the, in their minds, the flood control district has the technical expertise needed, but I think what's wrong with that and what's right with the CCAG, and I don't know how you work out the details for technical issues, but I'm sure you would, is that, that they are afraid that you'll try to make decisions that are technical in nature, when really these will be political decisions, because it's all about money and all sorts of very complicated things. And I, I, I hope, I'm glad you're going to go ahead with the CCAG recommendation, but that may be the reason. I mean, they may really wonder whether or not the tech, the lack of technical expertise will be an issue. I'm just...
Yeah. No, I think, but the way CCAG runs it, in all their major areas of responsibility, they have a technical committee, and it's made up of technical experts. Now, they make recommendations to, you know, the, the members of the CCAG board, of course, who are all city council members and county supervisors and so forth, but nevertheless, there is a technical component to everything that CCAG does.
Maybe you could include that, remind them of that.
Okay. Okay.
Good point.
I, I think that it's probably just as likely as the 22 members of the CCAG would, who are elected persons, would be just as technically savvy as the Board of Supervisors, who are elected people. So I, I think that everyone relies on consultants and on hiring people who really know what they're doing to bring them the information to assess. Any other comments on this topic? No? So we will move on to item E.
Okay. This is the classification of the code enforcement officer and the language of the job description. And it's going to shift now under the Police Department, as I understand, for management responsibility. And my question was, if that's the case, which I think, I have to think is a good idea, and the previous code enforcement officer was a retired policeman, that there isn't anything in the job description about prior police experience. And it would seem to me that that would be desirable. It wouldn't have to be necessarily the case, but certainly if someone had prior police experience, like the previous code enforcement officer, that would be nice. So, but anyway, that's my suggestion, and that get added into the experience qualifications.
Just to clarify, did you want that as a requirement or...
No, no, no. As a, you know, when you list all the, you know, relevant experience background, you list a number of things that you could have done or things that would be counted in evaluating your qualifications for the position. I think, you know, police experience should be one of the things listed there. I think it's education and experience section.
Ray, if I, I can ask on that, is, is this a full-time position?
This is a part-time position.
Part-time, okay.
I, I think maybe what we want to say, and I'll, Maria, check me on this, but is that the police experience may be one of the items?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
You can definitely list it as a desirable.
No, not, not necessary.
It does say law enforcement is one of the experience, code enforcement, law enforcement investigations are a comparable field.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily the same as, as experience as a police officer. At least it doesn't make it clear to me, anyway.
Yeah. We can massage it to put something like that in there.
Yeah. So, you know, I would think that, you know, especially since we're going to change the, you know, the location of supervisory old management, that, you know, maybe that would be a thing to put there, that's all.
Yeah. We just don't want to restrict ourselves to only...
No, it's not a requirement, it's just something that, that, you know, if someone has that in their background, okay, that's great.
And, and when we advertise for the position and we put it out there, we can definitely hit certain groups and professional organizations and retiree groups that would probably be a good source of candidates for that, so we can definitely target that.
I mean, maybe I got it wrong, but it seems to me that somebody who's been, you know, enforcing the law for, you know, this whole professional life, let's say, which was the case with the person who just retired, you know, they have some experience at that, and they know how to do that, and, and, you know, that's relevant. And so, anyway, that, that was my thought.
But I'm just wondering how it's different to, say, relevant... But I'm just wondering how it's different to, say, relevant experience is law enforcement versus police work?
Well, I mean, I mean, a lawyer could do law enforcement, you know. So, I just thought we'd be more clear about it for the average person, who would understand when, you know, police experience is pretty clear. That's all.
I'd like to apologize to the council for jinxing the meeting.
You did?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I didn't know you had.
Yeah.
You mean, wearing that polka dot tie?
No, no. Yeah, Clay and I called each other.
Are you wearing your polka dot tie tonight?
No.
No. I said to Clay the other day, "Eddie, Jenna looks pretty short." I'm sorry about that. We're really trying to extend this, so...
Anyway, is that, is that okay, just to add that as one of the possible experiences?
I can massage it a little bit to add that in. I just want to be very careful to make sure that this isn't perceived as a sworn position as well, so I just want to make sure that it's...
No, 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 no.
But we can definitely put that in as a desirable trait for experience.
So, do we want to just go ahead and approve this?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and...
Yeah. That's slight modification, that's all.
Motion to approve the staff's modification of resolution number 2015-36, which is item E on the current calendar.
Right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then, that moves us on to new business, and that's the report on capital improvement projects for fiscal year 1415.
Yes, ma'am. Honorable mayor member, ten council members, good evening once again. This is indeed a status report on the mini CIPs that were completed in FY 1415. The city manager asked that we put this item on here. Really, what this is, is a reflection of the change that we've had as a result of the economy finally getting better. I think we all suffered across the nation in the first decade of the 2000 century, with a period of six to seven years where we just didn't have a lot of money. During that time period, the Public Works Department lost 40% of our Engineering Department, and we lost 20% of our Operations and Maintenance Department. It was only last year that there really started to be funding available in the City's General Fund where we could go after a lot of these projects. So, as noted in the staff report, there were 35 projects that were put into place. It was $1.5 million worth of work. We've completed 1.2 of it. The rest of it is all underway, and we just wanted to bring that to your attention, that the items that you're giving to us, when you're giving us money, when you're deciding that projects need to be done, when you're accepting staff's recommendation, we're taking that money, we're investing that money into resources and into work and repair that you've asked us to do, and that's not to say that all the work's done. There's certainly a ton of work, you know, certainly Ms. Samson noted earlier that there's some deficiencies out at the Marina with the fishing pier, but I'll just note for the council that you're doing $4 million worth of dredging over a two-year period, you've allocated $200,000 and two full-time staff members over a two-year period to do dock repair. We're painting the harbor master's office as we speak, we've completely upgraded two of the restrooms out there. There's still more work to be done, the fishing pier is just one more of those items. You own a lot of stock, you own a lot of facilities. Certainly, one of the things that you've done this year, and again, very wisely, the city manager's initial recommendation to staff was that we go out and hire a firm to do facility assessment, so that across the board, we can understand what, not only what facilities we have, but what individual long-term capital types of maintenance do we need to do, so we can get a sense of that. So, I'd be happy to take any questions, but this was really just for your information.
Any questions for staff?
I do. Madam Mayor, so Randy, on page one of three, the concept plan to Lari to Alvarado Walkway.
Yes, sir.
So, here is budgeted for $25,000, and then the last column says, you know, that it's finished June 15th. I thought in the budget that we opted not to fund...
We didn't fund the construction, sir. So, we funded the concept plan. So, the concept plan was to get out there and figure out where we needed stairs, where we could put railroad ties on grade to create stairs, where we had to do alternate paths, get an understanding of what sort of utilities had to be relocated if we were going to permanently put stairs that had piles into them. So, that's all that funded, but we did not fund any of the construction costs.
Okay, so that concept plan, I guess that was in the previous year's budget, not in this last one?
Yes, sir, it was in 1415, so in 1516, funding construction was an option presented to you, and that was one of the capital projects that did not get funded.
Okay, all right, thank you for that.
Sir.
I have one quick question. Is the picture of the bicentennial walkway, is that the tree that Michelle's talking about?
You know, I got to be honest with you, sir, I'm not sure where that tree is, so I'm going to have to get with Michelle later, because I missed the reference.
No.
Okay.
That's not a pine.
Yeah, no, I totally recognize the tree that Michelle was talking about. I see it out my front window, and I've been having the same concerns.
I don't know if that's a eucalyptus, but anyway, good report, Randy.
Thank you, sir.
And I had one question that I had asked staff for clarification on, on the, under city council fund on the table, it says city gateway entrance design for $15,000 was approved. And I wasn't sure if that was the gateway project or the precise plan design, and it's the latter. But the name kind of threw me off a little, so just wanted everyone to be clear that that was for the parkset, parkside at Brisbane Village design, not the construction, but the design. Is that correct?
It's actually for the entryway on the northeast corner of the Bay Shore Old County, tunnel intersection, ma'am.
Oh, so it was.
It was the project you were talking about.
Oh, it was the entryway.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
My suggestion was that maybe we might want to take a look at that if we get into this other planning process in terms of...
Connectivity, because they're across the street from each other.
Kind of folded in.
We're not hearing you. I'm not hearing you.
I'm sorry. So, it's the project that you had kind of led the charge on for the entryway there. What I was suggesting was that is, if we get into the planning process for what we're calling the Parkside Village, then that area may be, we may want to include that area in there because it is kind of the entryway into town. It's just an idea, obviously, tonight's not the time to figure that out, but it's a possibility.
But I had thought that that was in, we originally approved that in, I guess, the 1415 budget, but it was not approved in this most recent budget.
What was, again, it was the same sort of thing as the walkway. The monies that were approved and spent were for the design and not for the actual construction. So, we don't have a construction budget at this point, an approved...
And I don't think we spent that entire $15,000 on the plan.
I believe that's, I don't know, I'd have to ask the public.
Just a few thousand, right?
I'd have to check, ma'am, I'm sorry, I'd hate to give you an answer off the cuff and be wrong.
As I recall, it wasn't that much, but it was just for the initial plan. Any other questions for staff? Are there any comments from the public? Seeing no hands.
There's no action item.
This is not an action item.
No, ma'am.
An update, so we will move on.
My turn again, ma'am. This is an amendment to Title 18, we're in Regulations of the National Code, item B.
Yes.
If you'd like to consider introducing that ordinance. So, this is really just a cleanup of things that have been going on in that title, that just some of it is just not reflective of what we've been doing. If you look at the red line version, as I noted in the staff report, there are some challenges with using the word find and replace function. I think Mr. Miller and I have talked about this before, if you, when you have a word such as harbor master that's defined, and it's defined as a capitalized word, if you go into Word and say, "Okay, find and replace all harbor master with a small h," Word doesn't understand that some of them have a capital H and some of them have a small h. So, it just finds every time harbor master's there and replaces it, so it makes it look like you've got a bazillion changes simply because you were trying to capitalize harbor master and Marina throughout the document. So, a little frustrating for the reader on the red line, but throughout the board, I really don't think that any of the changes are earth-shattering or anything that are going to require substantial conversation. So, rather than guessing which items, if any, you'd like to talk about, I'd be happy to just answer those questions for you.
Are there any questions for the staff?
Dredging the ordinance.
Yeah, no, I, it seems like a no-brainer to me.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to introduce ordinance number 598.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that brings us to item C, consider whether to authorize the council health and safety committee to continue to explore legislation related to door-to-door solicitation in business publishing or selling newspapers in Brisbane. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is, for the, this item is being brought to the council to update the council about some legislation that the Health and Safety Committee is considering, and to request authorization for the committee to continue looking at amending both the existing solicitation ordinance and business license requirements. The reason that we are bringing this forward is that shortly after receiving the authorization from the committee to prepare a draft ordinance to come back to the committee, the council had indicated that it wanted to adopt a policy such that if there was a request from either a committee or an individual member, that would exceed more than a certain number of hours of work, that the request would come to the council. And as I understand it, the committee has looked at a draft of that policy, and that policy will be brought to the council later this fall. But in the meantime, given that the amount of work on this project has already exceeded that number of hours, the city attorney, along with staff and the committee, wanted to get the council's direction here before the city attorney went ahead and prepared that draft and brought it back to the committee for consideration. The concern that was raised at the committee level was about door-to-door solicitation. And currently, Brisbane has a solicitation ordinance. Under the terms of that ordinance, no one is permitted to go door-to-door to sell goods or services without a business license. There is an exception to that requirement for those who are selling newspapers. That requirement does not apply if you're not actually selling something, so it would not apply to someone going door-to-door for purposes other than selling goods or services. Nonprofits that go door-to-door selling still must comply with the business license requirements, however, under the existing ordinance, there is no requirement that a nonprofit actually pay the tax associated with getting that business license. The committee has looked at a number of possible regulations, and at the current point, has instructed the city attorney to draft legislation that would do two different things. The first thing would be that, the, under the legislation, door-to-door solicitation would be restricted during certain hours of the day. So, the only time that someone could go door-to-door for purposes of selling goods or services would be from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM daily during standard daylight time, and from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily during daylight savings times. The second change that the committee has instructed the city attorney to make would be to eliminate a, the exemption that exists in both the solicitation ordinance and the business license ordinance that applies to newspapers. The request is, the impact of the amendment that is requested would make it so that those who are going door-to-door to sell newspapers or newspaper subscriptions would still have to comply with the business license requirements. Eliminating that requirement in the business license ordinance would also mean that those who are publishing or selling newspapers anywhere in the city, whether they're going door-to-door or they have a fixed location, would also now have to get a business license. Given that the council has not considered whether to adopt the five-hour rule, we wanted to bring this to the council before proceeding with this legislation. Our estimate of the amount of time it would take to draft the legislation requested, bring it back to the committee for one committee meeting, make, finalize the legislation and draft an agenda report, and then attend two council meetings, which would be required to pass the legislation, would be approximately eight hours of attorney time. And so, with that, I will, I don't know if the committee members want to speak to this, but we wanted to get your authorization as a council.
Okay. For...
Sure, I'll start off, because this is something that I had brought to the subcommittee. At the time, there were several instances in town of people complaining that people were coming to their homes, appearing to sell newspaper magazine subscriptions, and they were claiming to sell them on behalf of a school, and people didn't know whether or not it was legitimate or a scam to, you know, to get your money or to perhaps case the homes for burglary. So, based on that input, that's when we asked the city attorney to look into what exactly is on the books and how we can accomplish the goal to, and help residents know that these are legitimate salespeople or, you know, fundraisers or whatever that, you know, and how to regulate that. So, we talked about having, you know, a do-not-knock registry on file with the city or a no-solicitation sign as something that means that they can't go to your house, and we threw that around, but decided it was too burdensome for the city to keep that list and to really enforce it. So, what seemed to make the most sense was to eliminate that newspaper exemption, which in practice would mean that if a nonprofit or a school was having its volunteers sell newspapers or magazines, they would have to have a business license, and so, anyone doing the door-to-door selling would have to carry a copy of the license, and so someone could say, "Can you show me, you know, the proof, you know, the copy of the license, so I know that you're legitimate before I give you my money?" So, this seemed like, and also restricting the hours so that nobody was coming to your home at, you know, in the dark. So, this seemed, you know, to be the most efficient way to deal with it, and, you know, we've looked at it in two meetings, and I feel like it's gone, you know, pretty far along already, and I'm hoping that, you know, we are able to authorize that it be continued because I think that it would, it would be effective to help protect our residents.
Ray, do you have anything?
Yeah, no, she said it all.
Okay.
Yeah, it comes from the committee, so I support what she just said.
So, I have a question for staff.
So do I.
Okay, would you like to go first?
I'd go after Clark.
I mean, just, you know, reading it, I'm, you know, looking, looking at things like, well, just from my experience, you know, and how I've, you know, dealt with folks that have come up to my door, and I was thinking, well, how does this apply to Girl Scout cookies and kids selling chocolates for school? It just seems like it would be overly restrictive on something that kind of has an altruism to it, you know, that's really kind of been in a community for a long time. And you know, when kids show up and they have their list, you know, the chocolates or the sea candy thing or the cookies, that they're legit. It just seems like this would apply to them, too.
It would.
And so, you know what I mean, is when we do ordinances and stuff like that, I mean, the umbrellas start stretching wide and far, and it, you know, even though they wouldn't, they'd be considered nonprofits, but it becomes an extra step for them to have to get a business license, and so, how would we deal with something like that?
Well, it would be one business license for the entire organization. So, you know, when they give the form out, they can attach a copy of the license, whoever the team leader is, gets it. It's not like each person selling it would get a separate license, it would be, say, one organization.
I just have concerns about that, you know, I mean, that would, would that really work? And, you know, I wouldn't want to kill something that is kind of a good fundraiser for kids and stuff like that that really is legit, you know, instead of somebody showing up, you know, wanting to sell magazine, you know, subscriptions or something, so I...
The concern that you raise would apply to the existing law. There's nothing in the request from the committee that would change that status. Right now... Right now, the situation that you described, the Girl Scouts, the kids selling candy bars for the school team, all of those situations would require, under your, your current ordinance, that a business license be obtained. However, when it is a nonprofit, they're, they don't need to pay for that license. They don't need to pay the tax, but they still need to come in and get the license.
I don't, I don't really know if that's done because I'm, you know, I don't think so. And it's, I know it's one of those discretionary areas, but, you know, it's a gray one, too. And so, you know, it's like...
Certainly, we would be able to clarify that point or make an exemption if that was something that the council was interested in doing, but nothing that we've been instructed to draft would impact that piece of it. It would not change those circumstances. So if that was something that the council wanted to change, we could do that. I, I will leave to staff to speak about to what extent, as a practical matter, that it's being, whether it's, it's really being enforced against, for example, the Girl Scouts.
Yeah. Another thing I was thinking about was the newspapers, like, how does that apply to newspaper stands, like, or, you know, down by the post office and down in the shopping center in front of Midtown Market? Does a guy from the Chronicle need, yeah, the little vendor units? Does a guy from the Chronicle need to come and get a business license and put out 30 newspapers in town? Or, you know, I mean, it just, I don't know.
They would need to, under this exemption, if you made the amendment that applied to all, all of those selling newspapers, we, we would have to take a look at that, but it would apply to those as well. However, the license is based on number of employees and such. And so as a practical matter, we'd have to look at exactly how that operates, what would be the real impact when you're really just talking about a newspaper stand.
Yeah, it just seemed like to me, when we do an ordinance like this, it would have to have a real clear intent of who it's, who the ordinance is really targeting. And from that aspect, you know, I wouldn't want to do this large umbrella that would capture, you know, the Girl Scouts and the school and maybe, you know, the small newspaper vendor, you know, you know what I mean? That if we put an intent there, it kind of has, you know, some exclusion where it just doesn't capture everybody, you know? I, I just find it overly restrictive in the sense of...
I, I think with respect to solicitation ordinances generally, the concern would be if you start trying to exempt out certain organizations, et cetera, you could, you can raise or someone could raise a discriminatory effect. I think typically, these ordinances are enforced on a complaint basis. And certainly, if no one is complaining about the Girl Scouts coming to the door or, you know, the neighborhood schoolchildren selling Christmas candy or, or whatever, while technically, those organizations may not have a business license, it's probably no harm, no foul. But on the other hand, if there were nonprofit organizations that a, that a homeowner questioned whether or not they were actually legitimate, they could require, show us your business license, they didn't have it, they could complain about it, and city staff would contact the organization and tell the organization it needs to obtain a business license for its, its solicitors. So I, I'm, I'm less worried about trying to create exceptions because I think as a practical matter, these things tend to run on the basis of complaints, and most of the complaints we get are not for those kinds of organizations to which you refer.
Right, the complaints were all about, you know, people from outside of Brisbane coming in, from other, from high schools or, you know, other schools, or people just weren't sure because they didn't know those individuals, they didn't recognize the schools.
Sure.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I have some. So how many hours have you logged in so far?
I actually don't have that figure. Perhaps, does Stuart have the figure?
I probably have it back in, I probably have it back in my office or something close. I don't have it off the top of my head. Michael's thinking it's about 30. But I think that's probably for, I think it's for more than just this one item. I think it's for other items on the Health and Safety Committee as well.
Okay, all right. And then, all right, so we've been told that there's been multiple complaints from the community that, I guess, suspicious people are walking around Brisbane trying to get, trying to sell things. Whether or not they're selling a, you know, like I say, a newspaper subscription, you know, whether it's a real newspaper or not, how, you know, if, if, if we were to have some kind of regulation such as this, what would be the, the penalty? You know, how do you go out and enforce something like this?
Again, as, as the city attorney pointed out, this is going to be enforced based on a complaint basis. And so if we are getting complaints that there are folks in the neighborhood that seem like they're not legitimate, the police are going to come out there and ask to see their license, to see what's going on, to see what they're really doing. You know, there, there really, there is no way to ensure that every person who knocks on your door is knocking for a legitimate, laudable purpose.
Yeah, you know, you go to, like, Safeway or something like that, and there's some kids and say, you know, can you give me some money for, you know, my basketball team or my baseball team? And, you know, you just make a judgment call and maybe they're legit, you know, they show a little thing and you go, okay, well, you know what, you seem like a good kid, maybe I'll give you five bucks, or no thank you, and you just move on and go into the store. You know, there's that thing about, you know, well, maybe someone is, is trying to scope out the house. But say someone's walking around with a petition and they want you to sign something, to put something on the ballot, maybe they really want you to, maybe they're, they're interested in that particular issue that they want on the ballot, but maybe they're scoping out your house. There's nothing in here in regards to signing petitions.
There's nothing in here, the business license requirement is only going to apply where someone's actually trying to sell a good or service.
I know, yeah.
So if someone comes knocking at your door to proselytize, to ask you to make a donation, they're not selling something, they just want a donation, to come talk to you about, you know, who is running for a certain position, you know, all kinds of reasons. It could be your next-door neighbor talking about a public works project that's happening down the street. This ordinance, none of these regulations would impact any of that. What, what this would impact are folks who are coming to actually sell something, sell a good or service. And so there, there, there really is no way for you to regulate people coming to knock on a door. What you have are regulations like this so that people tend to come at the timeframes that they're supposed to come. And when people are knocking on your door beyond that, the resident is free not to answer and certainly free to call the police if there's some sort of suspicious behavior.
Do you have, have to have a regulation for someone to not answer the door?
No, 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 there's nothing in here that would regulate not answering the door.
Good, I'm glad that we have that type of regulation.
No, there's nothing in, in here that would...
So we've had this ordinance for a really long time. I mean, I, I've been in Brisbane since 1989 and I haven't heard any, like, serious issues. But then again, you know, maybe I haven't been that close to it.
Your house is too remote.
Maybe that's it, you know, you're right, I do live in a... Yeah, sometimes I even get lost trying to find my house. So...
Especially at night.
Robert, you know, I mean, are, are we getting, like, you've been here a long time. I mean, is, is there a real issue?
This does become an issue on occasion, and it's a quality of life issue for, for the residents, of course. And, and, you know, Clark brings up a great point about Girl Scouts and whatnot, we want to promote that type of activity. But what we get is these group of people that travel across the United States, actually, in groups that, that are very aggressive.
Gypsies.
And, and it's, it's not pleasant for the, for the residents, and there's concerns about that. And this ordinance is a great tool for us to be able to regulate and weed out the, either non-legitimate or those types of solicitors that are causing quality of life issues in our town.
Okay, so then, if, so it seems like it's tied to this newspaper. So if you eliminated newspapers from being exempt, does, does that then satisfy, you know, like, you as, you know, that this...
Well, they're all, they're, they're selling everything, so I, you know, I don't sure we can single it out as any one type of item.
But if they're selling those other things, that's already in the ordinance, isn't it?
So...
Yes.
There are two things that we've been requested to do in terms of drafting legislation. One piece is the, remove the newspaper exemption. The other piece would apply to, to everyone who is soliciting door-to-door to sell goods or services, and that is to basically impose time restrictions when you can do this. And it is 8:00 to 6:00 PM during standard daylight time and 8:00 to 8:00 PM during daylight savings times. That was the recommendation of the committee. That, that could be changed or eliminated. So that's one piece. That has nothing to do with newspapers in particular. That has to do with, if you have a license to go door-to-door, you can only do it during these timeframes. The recommendation was seven days a week, and so the only restriction really is the sort of late, late evening and middle of the night and early, early morning. The newspaper restriction, what that does is it imposes the same requirement on those selling newspapers as it imposes on anyone else selling any other type of product.
And does newspaper include magazines?
That's, that's the really, the sticky question, at what point does a, a magazine become a newspaper? I think there are some examples of magazines that are clearly not newspapers. There are other magazines which really look a lot like newspapers. And so there is this place where it's not very clear whether someone's selling a magazine, depending on the type of magazine, whether it would apply or not. And there are some, you know, First Amendment concerns when you start looking at what is the content of what is being sold. And so this would then put newspapers on the same footing as everyone else.
Okay, all right. Thanks.
So if, if it's a newspaper or not a newspaper, that's the 30-hour question. Looking at this, to me, I don't know how many actual issues we've had or complaints from the police over the years. I know that it got mentioned that a couple people had approached Lori to ask what our rules were, and that sort of initiated this and got the ball rolling. I think it's way too restrictive. I'm never home between 8:00 and 6:00, so that would eliminate me from being approached by anyone with a legitimate license or not if they can't come during working hours, I mean, or can only come during working hours. Even the kids selling candy don't come before 6:00 o'clock because they know nobody's home until 6:00. And I think that that would put certainly a damper on anyone doing a legitimate fundraiser to have to, you know, give your eight-year-olds a business license to be able to go out door-to-door to sell the, the candy. And this is almost like it's protectionism against anybody who's not a local. If, in my opinion, if the, if someone who looks inappropriate is walking and knocking on your door, whether they have a business license or not, you can pick up the phone and call the police and have them checked out. And that's what our residents should do if they think somebody's shady. And, and I think that the police would be certainly within their right to ask somebody what they're doing, whether they have a license or not. Or we have part of this as a, as a legislation or not. It seems that we're trying to over-legislate for an issue that doesn't seem like an issue to me. When I was a kid, I know there's a couple members of the public who would like to speak. When I was a kid, I went door-to-door and I sold seeds. I sold personalized Christmas cards in July to all the little old ladies all over town to, that they'd order for their Christmas season. And that was part of learning to meet people. And I, I think it's, it's good and it's something that kids can do and fundraisers and schools can do. And I just think this is over-legislating for not an issue, personally. So I, I have seen lots of people with hands and we'll just start with...
I think the police commander wanted to respond to you.
Well, I think she kind of answered it on her own. I mean, it certainly, we do want the public to call when they think there's a problem. We will go out and check it out. But once we've verified they are who they are, then they're going to be free to go about whatever business they are doing. And what effect that has on the community, you know, we will not be able to do anything further at that point, you know, if they indeed have not followed the ordinance.
But you'll know who they are and that they're not totally nefarious.
Perhaps. You know, depending on the situation, it depends how far we can go with it.
Okay. So Barbara, you wanted to say something?
Barbara Ebel, 349 San Bruno Avenue. I personally don't have a strong feeling about this one way or the other. I mean, I don't think, we go out selling with our son, maybe 8:00 PM would be more reasonable. I certainly don't like people coming after dark because sometimes there's big men selling magazines or newspapers and I'm like, and I'm home alone, I'm like, huh. It's a little worrisome. But I've never felt that threatened. So maybe 8:00 o'clock's more reasonable if you go forward with this. If my son wants to sell things for a spring thing for the best PTO, then the best PTO would just need to come down and file one piece of paper for all the kids, it wouldn't cost them anything. I don't think it's that much of a burden. What I do want to say, and what I'm very, very passionate about, is if this goes forward, then all of those businesses that put the, the flyers, they need to get with the rocks and the Mary maid with the rubber band, those people need to get licenses because they are polluting the city of Brisbane. Those things fly, fly all over the place and they're expecting to do business here. And I think that that is totally unfair to our local businesses who have business licenses in Brisbane. And yet these companies from out of town come in, they distribute the materials, they get jobs kind of on the side, under the board, but they don't have business, business licenses in Brisbane. So I feel very strongly that a business license should be a requirement for anybody who's coming littering on our streets. And I prefer they just stop littering, but maybe being required to get a business license would be one step in that right direction. And we all know these things go down the storm drains, they get into our bay, they get into our wildlife. I feel very strongly that this needs to be changed in this way. And I don't know if it should be done as part of what's going on right now or as a separate thing, but thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. The other side of the room, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen Mackin. I'll be brief. First of all, some first organizations don't follow rules. They're never going to get business license, they're not going to pay attention to what time of day it is. Secondly, contributions. I think if you're regulating, selling something, you're missing contributions. There are fraudulent people that collect for the widows and orphans of the police department, the sheriff's department. I've had them call, I've had them show up with clipboards. You've got to be a vigilant resident. And if someone is concerned about someone coming to their door, I would think Commander Meisner, that, that you could say to a resident, tell them they're trespassing and they need to leave. And if they don't, you call the police and say, I've asked them to leave, they're trespassing, please remove them. And it's not going to, they may go to another house, but that's going to happen anyway if they have evil intent, they're going to keep moving around, too. Thank you.
Michelle. Don't step on the pen.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident, lifelong Brisbane resident. We used to go to people's houses and knock and say, could we, would you like a cake? And then we'd take their money and go buy a cake mix and make them a cake and then deliver it. take their money and go buy a cake mix and make them a cake, and then deliver it. You know, I mean, this kind of an ordinance, all it's going to do is provide a false, very false sense of security for some people. It is not going to provide any kind of protection. The guy who came selling the, you know, magazines, he came to our house, too. Some young kid, oh, yeah, I lived down the street, you know, I didn't recognize him. I knew he didn't live down the street. He had, he had ID. He had what looked like a business license. Am I supposed to run and get my glasses and put it on and read every word as I'm standing there with the door open? You've got to use some common sense. You know, we have a lot of anti-stupidity laws already. If you don't feel comfortable answering the door, don't answer the door. This, this kind of legislation isn't going to protect you. It's not going to make a difference. And I just feel like it's, like we already wasted thirty hours, and we're about to waste ten more. We have a lot more important things to deal with than anti-stupidity legislation. People should watch out for themselves and take a little bit of self-responsibility. If you don't feel comfortable answering the door, don't answer the door. Okay? This isn't, like Colleen said, if somebody has, you know, ill intent, they're going to do it anyway, whether they have a permit or not. It may help the police with enforcement, but I think this is a very small issue that got blown out of proportion.
Tony Varios.
Tony Varios, I want to support Councilman Conway's opinion, and also Mayor O'Connell's opinion on this subject. Like, we have, everybody knows we have a fantastic town. We have the opposite of a flaming crime rate. I think we have almost a zero crime rate compared to our next-door neighbors. And we're very proud and happy to be able to say that. And I think we know why that is. I'm very confident that our police department, as small as it is, is very professional and fully capable of doing their job when it needs to be done. This seems to me like a solution in search of a problem. If, if the council reported, or if the staff, city staff, reported that we had a hundred incidents in a month, or a hundred incidents in a year, and someone was actually injured, or somebody's house was actually broken into, and you could connect the dots, then my suggestion would be that we need to do more public education about what Michelle Salmon and others have said in terms of using your common sense about how you protect your property and don't open your doors, or what you do. I just think that these, the ideas that I've heard tonight, coming from the committee about this ordinance, are just ridiculous, in one word, just ridiculous. It's not Brisbane, it's not friendly. If, as, as the mayor said, every outsider who comes into town selling something is not an enemy, or an evil person, or a criminal. And I don't think that we should even suggest that. I think we should maintain our open, positive attitude, and the friendliness of our town, the safety of our town, and educate everybody to look out for each other, and use the police the way they're supposed to be used in the appropriate manner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. One more.
I'd like to agree with the former speakers, and, and say that I think it's, we don't, we don't need any more restriction in this issue than we already have, and we can avoid First Amendment issues, and just be friendly. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it. I think it's a good idea to talk about it. But I hope you will not pursue this, and that you'll keep in mind that it really is better to legislate fewer laws, so that there is some of, of things that are left to the people to decide for themselves.
Thank you. Thank you. So are there, is there any further discussion? So do we need a motion to do this, or are we just asking for a recommendation?
I think you'd need a motion to authorize the council, because that's, that's the whole purpose of it.
That's right. The whole purpose is to say whether to continue or not. I mean, that's why it's on the agenda, and...
I'll make that motion to continue, to authorize the council to, for the council to authorize the city attorney to continue moving forward with this ordinance.
And is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
And then we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye?
No.
No.
So we will not be moving forward with that. Thank you. And so that moves us on to item D, which is the same type of issue. But I would like to take a five-minute break before we move on. Is that okay with my council members?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.